Get my feet under the table.
Rudy.
My foot flops on.
Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to call the 7:00 PM work session meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boonstra.
Here.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Mr. Shanley.
Here.
And Mayor Melkeyong.
Here. Can you please read the open work session statement?
Yes, if you want. I forgot to bring it up. This regular work session meeting of the Wykow Township Committee is now in session. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting appears on our annual schedule of meetings. A copy of said annual schedule has been posted in the bulletin board in Memorial Town Hall. Copy has been filed with the municipal court and has been posted on our municipal website. And a copy has also been emailed to the Record, Ritzwood News, and the North Jersey Globe News, all newspapers having a general circulation throughout the township of Wykow. At least 48 hours prior to this meeting, the agenda thereof was similarly posted, filed, and emailed to said newspapers.
Thank you. Can you please confirm Finance Committee has reviewed and signed vouchers?
Yes, sir. All these vouchers here, this mountain, have been signed.
Got a lot of hands, I heard. All right. Could I have a motion to open 10-minute public comment period, 10-minute public comment period, 2 minutes per speaker, for public comment on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the township of Wykow?
No move. Second.
Mr. Boonstra.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Lane.
Hi.
Mr. Madigan.
Yes.
Mr. Shanley.
Yes.
Mayor Melkeyong.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please step forward to the microphone if you wish to make a comment.
That being done, make a motion to close the public session.
Second.
Mr. Boonstra.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Hi.
Mr. Madigan.
Yes.
Mr. Shanley.
Yes.
And Mayor Melkeyong.
Yes.
An affirmative vote, the motion is approved.
All right. Matt, can we please have the 8:00 PM business meeting agenda review?
Uh, sure. So I've actually incorporated both 6:00 and 7:00 into my report here. I believe I've covered everything, so I'm gonna go through. If I miss anything, I'll come back to it. Uh, the third quarter tax collection is complete. Uh, delinquent notices for both sewer and taxes have been mailed out. The 2026 road improvement program has been completed. We laid 9,136 tons of new asphalt and milled 68,500 square yards of old roadway. Uh, special thanks to the DPW, especially Lenny de Block, who, for coordinating the day-to-day operations for this project. And we'll be closing this out, um, on a resolution this evening, uh, in the amount of plus $50,995.76, bringing the total of the contract to $1,097,044. Uh, DPW has been very busy with other various projects, including road paving, storm sewer work, and tree removals and upgrades to our fields. I'm pleased to report that the paving and line striping on Grand View Ave has been completed. We are now doing a few punch list items, uh, that are remaining, and will be submitting the reimbursement request to the DOT. Our outstanding receivable for this grant is approximately $112,500 that we'll be re-cooping from the DOT on that. The tree protection and removal ordinance is up for adoption tonight. A few minor changes have been made that are redlined, uh, for your review. Thanks to the Township Committee for working with me and the staff to, uh, minimize the burden on property owners while still meeting the requirements of our stormwater management permits with the DEP. Uh, along with the tree ordinance adoption tonight, there's also a resolution waiving the 2025 tree contractor registration fees for those who register this year. Uh, since there are only four months left of the year, we don't believe it's fair to charge a full registration fee this year and again next year, uh, once we have such a short season left. There's also a resolution authorizing the CFO to request permission of the Division of Local Government Services to add a dedication by rider to our approved list for the tree replacement program donation account. The Morley Drive sewer extension project was bid out and is on the agenda for approval this evening. We received five bids ranging from, uh, the lowest bid, which was $73,979.50, to $189,250. Uh, after the award tonight, the contract will be notified, and work per the bid spec must be completed by November 1st. At the last meeting, we awarded a contract to Sanitation Equipment Corporation, uh, for the purchase of a rear-load Packer truck. Tonight's agenda includes a resolution rescinding that award and re-awarding the contract, also under the Sourcewell Cooperative, uh, with a price increase of approximately $15,266. This is mainly due to the price of delivery of the truck from Arizona where it's been built, where it's being built. Delivery is projected for April, and we look forward for having the truck ready for the fall season next year. Um, we have received a new closed container at the recycling facility. It's currently being lettered and signs are being made. We hope to start accepting clean Styrofoam for recycling, uh, within the next month or two. We won't be densifying it here. Instead, we'll deliver it to the company that we deliver our, uh, deliver the, um, Styrofoam to, uh, on our Shred Fest days in Waukegan. Uh, there's a resolution tonight renewing our membership in the Bergen County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund for another three years. Our current membership expires on December 31st, and we're already working on our renewal for 2025. Speaking of insurance, unfortunately, we received news that another significant price increase under the state health benefits program is on, is on the horizon. The proposed increase is for 2025 is 17.2%, but that approval has been stalled by the governor's office, and we're waiting to hear further. There's a resolution tonight approving the update, approving and updating three specific policies and procedures to supplement our personnel manual. First is the comprehensive vehicle management, driver safety, and licensing policy. Second is our Notre Republic policy, and the third is a seminar conference and meeting expense reimbursement policy. As you know, the new, as some of you may know, the new Oprah law goes into effect on September 3rd. Nancy and her staff have been working, have been busy refreshing themselves on the new law, and we expect a smooth transition, uh, to that, uh, after the 1st of the month. And just a fun fact, the clerk's office has handled 518 Oprah requests so far this year.
Matt, excuse me.
Yeah.
May I? Um, what's the main difference in the new law when it all gets flushed out, it's gonna go into effect?
Additional redactions are required. Um, some, some new items are exempt from, are not, are, yeah, I guess exempt from Oprah now. Um, and the main one is that commercial entities have some limitations on what they can and cannot request, um, such as the weekly Oprah request that every municipality gets to produce police accident reports by firms that then sell all that data to doctors' offices, chiropractors, physical therapies, lawyers, um, which is just voluminous. Um, but it's, it didn't put any restrictions on the press. It really did, it just pretty much says that you cannot use your Oprah request to run, you cannot use us to do your business for you.
So, can we get, if we don't have a copy, can you just leave us a copy sometime, just so we can?
Sure. Uh, I think there might be a couple, uh, cheat sheets, because the law is very, not, not very easy to read. Um, it's taken people some time to, to understand it.
Okay.
But we'll get something out for you.
Thank you.
Just making note here. Uh, speaking of records, we're in the process of, uh, digitizing our permanent records that are located in the basement, specifically building department files, planning and zoning files, and septic files. I want to thank the Township Committee for funding part of this, this project, part of the project this year, and I look forward to its completion. And a big thank you to the clerk's office and the building department staff for stepping up and making this happen. The other day, I believe, uh, our vendor picked up 36 huge storage bins of files, and we've emptied out probably 25 file cabinets so far. All those records should be scanned in within the next three weeks, and they'll be back for the next batch.
Okay.
What percentage is done?
Less than 10.
Okay, good, okay.
Uh, the Wykow Township calendar plan, sorry, the 2025 Wykow Township calendar planning is underway. Uh, next year, we'll be highlighting the municipal services and the staff that will make, that make it all happen. Uh, the calendar will also be a 13-month calendar, including January 2026, so in case there's any delays in getting the calendar out in future years, the, going forward, the calendar will be 13 months. Uh, just a note that we do have a couple sponsorships positions left. Now that we've added a 13th month, we actually have two additional sponsorships available, but we still have a few left. If anybody's interested, please reach out to Denise. Our new court administrator through our, oh, well, I have a note to go to the last page, hold on. On the dais is the 2025 draft annual schedule of meeting dates and township holiday dates. Please look them over. If you have any questions, please, uh, reach out to Nancy, uh, so that we can get that finalized, as we're already working on our 2025 January 1 reorg agenda. Our new court administrator through our shared service with Glen Rock has started, and court sessions are regularly being held in Wykow again. Uh, tonight, there are three resolutions closing out different affordability assistance program grants for renovations to Evergreen, Evergreen Court Apartments at Christian Health. Since instituting this program last year, we've been able to award and close out 10 grants, expending around $250,000 from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And this money, as you know, is restricted for certain purposes. This is one of those purposes, so I'm glad that we've been able to use some of those funds. All the wood for the new restrooms at Memorial Field is scheduled to arrive on Monday, the 26th. The DPW plans to be on site that week to construct the new restrooms, um, and this was, as you know, funded in part by the 2023 DCA Local Recreation Improvement Grant.
What's the expected time they're gonna put that together?
They're gonna start, the walls will go up on Monday, or the week, next week. We're, we're optimistic that the restrooms will be finished, or I should say substantially finished and ready to open for October.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, with the walking trails at Russell Farms Community Park completed, we've submitted our grant reimbursement to the County of Bergen Open Space Trust Fund, uh, in the amount of $48,000, closing out the 2021 grant. We're currently reviewing, uh, work completed over the past three years at Memorial Field, uh, working to close out the 2020 Open Space Trust Fund grant that we have totaling $70,400. Moving on to personnel, uh, several employees have retired or will be retiring this year. In June, Jan Barr, in our assessor, our assessor's inspector, retired. Last week, Hunter Clements in the building department left us, as she's relocating with our family. Fred Deppkin, our fire official and zoning officer, will retire on October 1st, and Cindy Rezu, our lead technical assistant in the building department, will retire on January 1st. And, uh, I'll be meeting with personnel starting this week to discuss plans for replacing all these employees. Uh, we currently have an ad posted for the technical position, technical assistance position in the building department. This position does require certification through, as a technical assistant by the state of New Jersey. We're looking for somebody with experience to help with the transition, as I've already mentioned, one, one employee has left already, and Cindy will be leaving at the end of the year. Tonight's agenda is also a resolution reappointing five of our six SLEO 3 officers, Francisco Aguilera, uh, Rob Feeney, Anthony Ferrara, Luis Mendez, and James Sisto. One of our SLEOs will not be returning as they have accepted other employment. Uh, the police department is currently interviewing for this position, and we hope to have somebody in place by the opening of school. On the same topic of SLEOs, also on your agenda this evening is two resolutions authorizing amendments to our shared service agreement with both Wykow K8 School District and St. Elizabeth Church regarding the SLEO 3 officers that we provide. Originally, we planned for each officer to work 189 days per year. This agreement lowers that number to 185, as it was determined 189 days were no longer necess, was not necessary. On the agenda tonight is a resolution authorizing the execution of a developers' agreement with three homes on Birtwood Drive and Frederick Court for a private sewer extension. Planning is underway for two different sanitary sewer extensions on Helena Ave. The first project involves three houses, and the next project involves eight, eight houses, totaling 11. Uh, we're hoping that both of those projects will join together, since they are, they will be abutting each other, uh, but as of right now, I believe there are two separate projects. Uh, and I'm hoping that, uh, with the road being opened and with the plans that we will be paving the road next year, uh, that this will entice Ridgewood Water to extend their water main all the way up Helena Avenue. The majority of the new sanitary sewer line on Turhune and Sycamac Ave, or Turhune Drive and Sycamac Ave is completed, and work is being done to connect the laterals to the homes and the businesses. Ridgewood Water is beginning work on the sanitary sewer extension, starting at Wayman Drive at Concord Place, continuing on Concord to Carlton Road, up Hartong, and ending at the new Ames Treatment Facility at the corner, corner of Covington Place. Um, and a reminder that the 2019, that in 2019, the Wykow Police Department established a safe exchange zone here in front of the police department. It's right outside, if anybody doesn't know, it's on the far side, the train track side of the building. Um, it's monitored 24/7 by our camera system, um, so anybody who's, who is conducting some online sales or needs to make a, wanna have a safe transaction, this is a spot, um, you know. And that, I believe, covers most of the agenda. Uh, there are also no ordinances for introduction and for motions, and finally, there also is an, the ordinance for second reading and final consideration is on amending our stormwater management ordinance specifically, uh, regulating privately-owned salt storage sheds. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Township Committee reports. Rudy, wanna clear this off?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. I wanna start off with an announcement, a little sad. Charlie Sumis, who was mayor in 1976, um, passed away on August 4th. He was 95. Um, Charlie began his career in politics in 1973 or '72 on the, uh, the election campaign of Al Gallant Camp and Jimmy Sheehan. And, uh, he became part of the group and, uh, ran for the Township Committee and served, I believe, two terms, and he was mayor in 1976. His daughter, Carrie Thompson, actually stayed in town longer. She was a member of the Republican County Committee in District 2 and left town about six or eight years ago and moved to Florida. So, um, Charlie had a good, long life, and he was, uh, he was, uh, just a good guy, and, uh, we, he served his community well, and we appreciate it, so. Tom Mattigan, Tom Mattigan and I, twice in the last two weeks, visited Lou Rizzo, who was, um, who is, um, in a facility now, but he seems to be doing a little better. I just wanna, he's our oldest fireman in town, and, uh, he's 96 years old, and he was doing better the second time we saw him than the first time. Tom, you may wanna mention something, too. Planning Board has no meeting tonight, or this, this month. Um, Environmental Commission has no meeting, but as Matt mentioned, the Styrofoam collection container has arrived, and we'll be putting that into service for too much longer. Board of Health has no meeting. As Matt mentioned, um, we, um, we are awarding, or we're passing a resolution to award a construction contract for the sewer connection on Morley Drive with the Wild Duck Road, which has been a long time coming, but it's good news that we're awarding a contract. We're moving forward with that. We're also, uh, under sewers. As Matt noticed, noted, um, we're approving the developers' agreement for the Thomas Place Frederick Court, um, project, which is currently suffering from a little lack of focus, and it's kinda mired in miscommunication, but I'm sure we'll get it straightened out. Um, I met at the Zabriskie House with Joe Vander Pla and John Denikamp. Um, the, what I'll call primitive Bilco door on the building is in need of repair. It's a, it's a homemade Bilco-style door. It's all wood, and it's been there probably 150 years, and it's, needs some, needs some repair, and, um, uh, Mark's in tomorrow, got some quotes or had some door people coming. They just wanna sell you a new Bilco door. But I think John Denikamp, we looked at, and I think he can, he can repair it and keep it kinda in, in its original, original look and, and function, so we're gonna move ahead with that. I wanna thank the DPW for the installation of 25 mile-an-hour signs around town. Um, and as per, uh, Matt's comment about the safe zone outside here, uh, by the police station, I was talking to a resident today who actually was a victim of, um, Facebook Marketplace theft, and I wanna give a shout-out to our detective bureau, who solved it after two months, believe it or not. And, uh, good for them, and I, this gentleman didn't even know about this place, or our safe space, and we, maybe we could publicize that somewhere, so, because I think that's becoming more and more popular, and I think it's becoming more and more a target for thieves as well.
After, after you and I spoke today?
Yeah.
Uh, I sent a note to Nancy and to Dave, and, um, it's gonna be in Thursday's e-news. We'll make sure that it gets into a regular e-news.
That would be great.
And it's also, um, Nancy will publicize it on our Facebook, and the police department will publicize it on theirs.
You're on social media today.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, I think that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Rudy. Uh, Tom?
Okay, uh, I'll just pick up, uh, yeah, Rudy and I did go see Lou Rizzo over at Villa Marie Claire, which is over in Sal River. Beautiful place, magnificent place, Louis hanging in there, he got like nine lives, so, the first time we saw him, he was pretty weak, pretty frail, and then we had an opportunity to see him this past weekend, and, uh, he was, uh, his old chip as self. He still has a lot of issues going on, but it was good to see him, give him a hug, and listen to him tell us about what a great life he's had, and a lot of good friends, so. Keep Louis, uh, in your prayers. I, I too, I'll just wanna comment on the successful paving program. I know I've received many compliments, um, about the end results. There's a lot of activity in town, 'cause there were things going on, Sycamac was going on, and, uh, so on, but everybody seemed, uh, pretty happy with the end results, and I wanna compliment the DPW for all they've done, and looking forward to seeing those stripes in the road and crosswalks and so on, and I just wanna say that I know that there was some discussion out there about the million dollars for the paving, but it's an investment, uh, well-needed and well-deserved, and it'll last us a while. I note on the agenda this evening that, uh, we're gonna be promoting firefighter Sean Hammerton to a full-time, uh, fire department, um, fireman effective, uh, today. So congratulations to him, and I just want other, one other thing. Had a rec board meeting last night. It was a full group of people, lot of activities going on with the rec board. We talked about the summer, looked at the fall. They had football practice going on, Memorial Field was packed. So I just wanna report that not only is the football program participation with the cheerleaders, they're the largest group they've ever had, so it's been growing, continues to grow, and, um, it's, it's a nice thing to see, particularly all the volunteer coaches and, and, uh, parents that come out to help and support the youngsters. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Raj?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of comments. Uh, first, uh, we are finalizing the tree ordinance tonight. I wanna thank, uh, Committeeman Madigan for sitting in on a meeting and making a few de minimis changes with our council and our administrator. Uh, if you guys do go to see Lou Rizzo again, let me know. I'd like to, I'd like to see him. He's a super guy. Uh, I, I don't wanna be redundant about, uh, DPW and road paving. You've heard, uh, you've heard that mentioned a number of times this evening, but, uh, congrats to everybody that was involved. DPW does a tremendous job, and you really can see, uh, the aftermath of their activities. I did get a, a nice personal note from somebody for a cleanup on the road right near Route 208 by the DPW. It was a lot of dead trees and brush, and it was cleaned up, so it looks more presentable, so we'd like to thank them for that as well. Uh, I talked to the police chief today, and we're gonna be discussing, myself, Pete, and obviously the Township Committee, additional, uh, speed, uh, measures to lower the speed limit to 25 on some other streets that it would be appropriate, and we're talking about trying to do some kind of, uh, for lack of a better term, a marketing push to, you know, have everybody slow down, especially, 'cause, you know, a lot of times, uh, it is our own residents, obviously, and, uh, hopefully, we can just take it a little bit easy when we're in the boundaries of Wykow. Additionally, uh, there was a request, uh, from Bach to Rock. Tim and I talked about, uh, for the fireworks that are coming up, uh, they wanna volunteer free of charge to have some of their musicians play something. There is a DJ that has been hired, so we'll try to coordinate that, where, you know, some of these local kids that go to the school, uh, will, uh, you know, play some music at the fireworks. So, uh, it's a work in progress. We should be able to make that happen. What else? Three, there's, 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 that's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Again, everything, so much redundancy, I don't wanna kill it, you know?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Raj. Tim?
Thank you. I want to just report on the zoning board, Matt. They had, uh, about three applications on, two of them got approved. Nothing, uh, really worth reporting, but the one that got held up, and they're coming back, involves the Christian, um, the, the school over on Sycamac, um, and they, that's, um, Eastern Christian, sorry, Eastern Christian School, where their, their, their enrollment is up, so they're looking to turn those, what you call it, the, um, trailers they had into permanent, um, classrooms, but that impacts possibly more traffic and more water runoff. So they gotta come back with better in, information for the board, so the board, uh, said they gotta come back for the September meeting, and, um, it, it's just on hold. It didn't get approved or rejected. Ramapo Indian Hills, they had a number of different special meetings regarding the hiring of a superintendent. They eventually agreed to hire superintendent. Her name is Shawna DiMarco. She was from Tena Fly at one point, and there was another Bergen County town, it might've been Rutherford or East Rutherford. And, uh...
Lynnhurst.
Or Lynnhurst. It was, uh, I couldn't remember which one, but she was hired on a 5-4 vote. Um, and Roger just reported about the Bach to Rock Music School here in Wykow. It's, I believe, a Wykow resident is, uh, running that, and it would be young children that are making music, that are gonna get a chance to play at the fireworks, um, you know, and demonstrate what they can do, and maybe give, uh, some, uh, some, you know, information about their school, uh, free of charge, uh, at the fireworks. And as long as nobody has an objection to it, I think, you know, Roger and I can make it work as part of the fireworks committee, um, and working with our fire chief in order to get it done. So, um, the fire department had their company meetings, uh, last week. I unfortunately could not attend those, so I don't have anything to report off of those, um, because I had issues that I was dealing with my, my, my sons who are playing football, but I wanna congratulate Sean Hammerton, who's gonna become a full firefighter for Company One, and I wanna thank him for volunteering, uh, as a volunteer firefighter, uh, to help, you know, protect our township. So, thank you. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Mayor, just before you go, I have one, uh, just further clarification, um, on one of the resolutions, and it has to do with the, with the road paving closeout, and I just wanted to say that, you know, we, we've been working very closely with our neighboring towns, um, and of that million dollars that we spent, 100,000 of it is actually coming from, uh, different municipalities, uh, who have contributed to our program. 75,000 is from Franklin Lakes, for roads in Franklin Lakes that also start in Wykow, so, because we started, and we pushed the project through to the end of the road in Franklin Lakes, Burrit, Covington, Packer, those areas, uh, so 75,000 comes from Franklin Lakes, and 25,000 came from Ridgewood Water to pave the area of woodland in front of the library, uh, that came from that new, uh...
Sewer.
...sewer that they, uh, not, sorry, new, uh, water main that they were in.
Water loop, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so, 900,000 is what Wykow spent this year on the road.
That's a good point. Great.
Thank you, Matt.
All right. Um, I just wanna report on some, uh, three new grants we received. It's always been one of our objectives, is on the Township Committee, to bring as much money back to Wykow for different projects and services around town to try to ease the tax burden, and Matt, along with our grant writers, Brunon Associates, have been doing an excellent job over the last two years, bringing, bringing a lot back to Wykow. So, the first one, uh, we just received. So the first one we just received, I believe last week, is a community energy, sorry, community energy plan grant, which the township of Wykoff has been selected to receive $10,000 award through the NJBPU Community Energy Plan Grant to assemble a group of local municipal staff, elected officials, relevant municipal board and commission members and community volunteers and/or green team members, AKA the planning team. This team will assess the township's needs to identify opportunities for energy, resiliency, renewable energy, and energy efficiency. Based on what's identified, the team will then construct a plan for those opportunities through the township. And then the second one, I believe we may have mentioned, but I just want to read it again. We received a grant from the NJDCA for the Local Recreation Improvement Grant. So the township of Wykoff has been awarded 66,000 for the Russell Farm Park Improvement Project consisting of the installation of outdoor fitness equipment with concrete footings as well as surface materials at seven locations throughout the park. And then the last grant we received is hot off the press that came through some snail mail we received the other day. And we have two members in our audience, Ms. Toomey and Ms. Carbone, that might be very excited about this one, so. This is from the NJDOT Transportation Project Fund. So township of Wykoff has been awarded a grant of $64,414 from the NJDOT Local Transportation Projects Fund for Spring Meadow Drive Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project. Aimed at, sorry, enhancing pedestrian safety at the intersections of Spring Meadow Drive and Wykoff Ave. As part of these improvements, the County of Bergen is conducting a speed study with the aim to reduce the speed limit on Wykoff Ave from 35 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour, which is expected to take several more months to complete. We want to extend our deepest gratitude to all who played a pivotal role in securing this grant. Our administrator, Mac Cabalo, our engineer, Mark DiGennaro, our police chief, Dave Murphy, the Wykoff YMCA, Joe Milak, president of Spring Meadow Condo Association, Father Stephen from St. Elizabeth Church, and our assemblyman, Krista Phillips. All their efforts will greatly enhance the safety and quality of life our community members, particularly the elderly and frequent pedestrians in that area. So that was some great news we received. I know it's been discussion over the, you know, the last year or two. And so we're looking forward to making some improvements. Still going to take a little bit more time, but this is a, this is a great, great start that we have on that, so.
Mrs. Toomey, make sure that you go back, or Ms. Carbone. Tell them that you're so happy that everyone's working together and this is great news.
Yeah, yep. And that's actually all.
I have one more comment, one more little shout out. I noticed that the, the striping contractor from the county has been around town, striping all the county roads. And I'd like to thank the county at this meeting for getting, sometimes we wait till October and November before they get here, but they're ahead of the schedule this year, which is really great. So thanks to the county.
Yeah, no, that's excellent.
And if I can just echo that a little bit, our local, our contractor was also, I believe it was actually the same contractor and I think they're working at the same time.
Okay, okay.
We have some striping on municipal, on county roads that we had to do ourselves, like the striping in front of Company 2 that got done. But we also, if you notice, that the yellow stripe has been made permanent in certain areas on the gutter line of West Main Street in order to try and alleviate the parking, impeding the driveways and the site distances there. So hopefully, and, and we, there's also a new center line down the center, a new W O down the center. Hopefully this will help reduce the speed also on West Main Street.
Thank you, Matt. That's all I have. I just want to, which I want to enjoy the last week or two left in the summertime. I, I just amended my report right here, since that's my part of my report. All right, I guess they want to go to Dave for an exciting tweet from our township.
Yeah.
Our township attorney. Just one thing.
Don't be de minimis.
It's exactly it. Committeeman Lane referenced our ordinance that for second reading and final approval for the tree removal and replacement. I did have an opportunity to review the, they were definitely de minimis changes. They weren't substantive, but I think it just cleaned it up and made it a clear reading. And I appreciate the Shade Tree Commission for their efforts, staff, Matt, billing department, and those committeemen that have, were involved in really trying to bring this together. Obviously, we needed to move forward on this due to some state regulations and state requirements. So I think what we put together is the best we could under those requirements and regulations that we have, so thank you. But they worked, de minimis changes. We can go ahead and approve it on a second reading tonight.
That's it?
That's it?
Oh, wow, all right. Thanks, Dave. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boonsta?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Hi.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Mochiel?
Yes.
With an affirmative vote, we are adjourned.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, I was going to get into that.
When were we required to pass that law? What's the deadline from the state?
Yeah, they're going to copy ours, but in any, you know, look. Truth be told, we didn't want to do anything, but we're compelled. Compelled. What are the penalties if we didn't do anything? I guess we don't, we didn't want to figure out what they could do.
Getting any time away before the end of the summer? Getting any time away before the end of the summer, or?
Yeah, I took all, I mean, I was ready for a lot of hikes. I came back out. And this one, this week is the best. I just have so much going on. I got Phoenix all day tomorrow, out of the building, Thursday, Friday. All day here in the building, so.
Fall down the shore, I love the best.
Summer, September, I think is the best time down the shore.
If you're into.